I would like to call this meeting of November fourteenth to order. Please stand for the pledge and the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands
Everybody bow your heads. Father God, thank you once again for entrusting us with your town. I ask that you give us your wisdom, discernment, that you help us make decisions the best of our town citizens. May we honor you and always say in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, I think we're at roll call. Commissioner McMullin.
Present.
Commissioner Paul Land.
Here.
Commissioner Ramos.
Present.
Vice Mayor Satterfield.
Present.
Mayor Sturt.
Here.
You're all here.
Thank you. All right, I think we have. Oh, we're to the fun part. Darren, do you have a presentation you would like to make?
Okay, just a couple minutes of your time. If I could, Samaria, if you'd come up here. Madam Mayor, members of the commission, just want to explain some of the changes that have been made here, one of which is we established an awards policy and have an awards committee, which I do not serve on, obviously to be unbiased, but the committee receives nominations for various awards that are outlined in the policy. And one of the awards this month, which was just voted on by the committee last week, is the officer of the quarter for the third quarter of 2023. Samaria Lake, who many of you know and have been in contact with her doing her job with a smile on her face, I'm sure. She performs every task every day in exemplary manner. She really does. She sets the example for everybody about her, to include me, as to how we should be with the citizens in the town. And some of her roles, some of the things that went into this award, she, her previous experience before she came here, she was a code enforcement officer at Claremont. And when we had the need for a code enforcement officer, she immediately jumped in and said, hey, I'll do it on my days off. I'll come in and take care of your code enforcement duties for you on my days off. So we can still be caught up while we're in the search for a code enforcement officer, which is fantastic, her willingness to do that. When we did hire a new code enforcement officer, without hesitation, she stepped up and said, I'll bring in a new code enforcement officer to be what we need in Oakland. And she did that in no problems, in less than two weeks, she got it done. She, when we had the new recruits that got hired here recently, she volunteered and stepped up and said, hey, I would like to teach a block of your orientation and teach them report writing, the way that she writes reports, which are absolutely phenomenal, really something to be modeled. She's taken on her new assignment as a field training officer. She went to the school a couple of months ago. And she's now finished this past weekend with her second recruit and doing a fantastic job with that. In an effort to better herself and better the department, she attended a women in law enforcement seminar in Claremont, Florida earlier this year, which she's brought back things immediately from the class and said, here's what I've learned, here's what I want to do to make this place better. And she's really taken an active role. She's always looking for better ways to better herself as a person, as an officer, and to help the residents of the town. Most of all, her positive outlook on everything she does makes her a pleasure to work with. There's just, there's nothing better I can say about her. She's a valuable part of the agency and she truly exemplifies what it means to be a part of the Oakland family. And for that, the committee voted on her to be the officer. I didn't want to give her just a certificate, so I'm going to present her this little extra piece of safety for her. And what this is, it's called the guardian angel. It's on their uniform. And while they're out on traffic stops and things like that at night, they just hit the button and it stands down so people see them. So they don't get anything. And then there's also a mode on here. So when she's, if she's writing something at night, she can use this as a steady light while it still keeps a strobe light to keep her safe. So this is just a little token of my appreciation for her and the great work she does that we do, and I appreciate it. Well, I think you know, I probably didn't get a picture of her. Yeah, you don't run back to the.
You forgot to talk about her pickleball.
I didn't want to talk about that because she has the tendency to embarrass anybody that steps on the court.
That was what I wanted to hear.
Are you busy on your phone?
Ah, yeah.
There's a lot of people for this corner. It's a better shot. There you go. No more. We congratulate them.
I know, right? You're on the side of the road. You may need one of those one day, right? On my car.
Hey, get your fake police uniform and a fake light and go for it. We are to public forum. Anyone who wishes to speak, you have three minutes. Tell us what you think. And I know that Chris signed up to do this. Come on up. Tell us who you are.
Good everybody. My name is Chris Lopez. I live at 415 North Daniels Street on the west side of Spear Park. The park has changed a lot in the years that I have been there, and I'm not against change. It is inevitable. It is something that you stop, and I do feel that change should be thoughtful. So going forward, I would make some suggestions that I, I would really like you to consider seriously. I would like to see the parks in town designated as either residential or recreational. Residential parks being parks that are surrounded by houses. And if any changes or additions are suggested for these residential parks, those should be considered. Notifying the people who live around that park in waiting, having a meeting discussing what the proposed changes are. And then, of course, having the board vote on it, the commission. I don't want to see what has happened at Spear Park continue onto Grace Park or Vanderly Park. Tub Street is a scenic highway spur. You drive through the beautiful roundabout of historic buildings. You go down to Dom. But when you get to Spear Park and you turn, look, it's a wall of chain link. And it's not only an eyesore opportunity to enhance our downtown area. What the plan is for Spear Park, I know there is one, but I don't know what it is. And I don't think any of my other neighbors know this either. I was at the public input meeting that we had a few years ago, lots and lots of requests made. But I don't feel like the people living on the park were heard. And I feel like the living on the edge of the changes should have a little bit more say or their, they should hold a little bit. Because it really does affect us day to day. I have really good replacement windows with double pane glass. And when they're closed, I can hear balls bouncing in the park. There's a drum set on the playset. I can hear the drums banging in my house. It sounds like Jumanji some days. I'm truly hoping that you're done with Spear Park now and that there's not too much more coming because it's full. And I hope that we don't improve our town to the point it's quite a charming place to live in. And thank you very much for the opportunities.
Thanks, Chris. Do you have that in writing that you could submit for the record or is it just your notes?
My notes?
Yeah.
So I didn't mess up? Yeah, you can have those.
At least would be very grateful that she doesn't have to recreate it from tape.
Or less, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't we all wish we could go to?
I didn't put mine on the chair out.
I saw you waving your hand. Was that a goodbye? Oh, gotcha. Okay, because you're going to have an opportunity and welcome stuff to speak when we talk about the canal. So we are now to consent agenda. Do we have anything that we have questions about? Anything allowed? So it's utility people, the Fisher people, I take it, Arthur? Is Mari kidding?
Yeah.
Come on. We'll try, we'll try and solve it for you if we can do it in a short amount. Otherwise.
And I got a business card for Smooth City Manager, but I don't think I should email. My name's Jason. I moved to Oakland Park about a year ago. I was checking on the millage rates, Winter Garden versus Oakland, or Winter Garden versus Oakland, I'm sorry. And I think it was five, five, eight in this area.
I can, I can solve that for you.
And my seventeen, I didn't know.
Seventeen?
Yeah. I didn't know if that was.
Doesn't sound.
Yeah.
Our millage is six point. Three, six point three as of this year. That also includes Orange County Fire, which you won't, you will see in Winter Garden, they break their fire out. So if you take away what they, what we pay for fire, we're about the same, we're close.
Yeah, I have the state school in General County and S J W M and yeah.
Saint John's Waterman.
My. But our part of.
Vivid is six point three.
Yes, okay. Is that, I was told by my builder at my house, like the next house over at Winter Garden, mine, he said, I guess my property tax rates are almost purple, my neighbors, which.
Shouldn't be. Winter Garden's somewhere in the fours.
Okay, yeah, four point five, I think it was.
They break their fire out.
Okay.
So that's another two mills on top of a four.
Okay.
So if you look at ours, ours includes fire. So it's, it's generally close.
Okay.
Because we took fire away, it would be foursome.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, I didn't know if it was, I guess they added them all up like. My stuff's not my background. So I guess, is it any higher than or lower than normal?
It's less than Orlando, city of Orlando, which is astonishingly high. It's going to be less than Windermere because of that, the home values in Windermere.
Okay, I came from below. Maybe that was my credit references a little off.
I don't know what, I honestly don't know what.
Yeah, I think it was like two or three a year. Now it's, I guess I'm paying for it.
Well, get what you pay for.
Yeah, yeah. So, but it was weird, like it was strange, like with the neighbors with the Winter Garden side, I guess, being like you said, four point five, like I said.
They don't, they.
And they separated out the fire and everything.
Have to, you have to look at it holistically. And we feel like we're pretty competitive and especially for all that we offer. So, you know. We have year over year, about every other year, we lower that.
Yeah, I saw an article about that. It was like, I can't remember, it was in the ten thousands of the decimal. All right, you got it wrong. That's how, I couldn't remember the exact number, but okay. That's good. Like I said, I knew all this, didn't really know the ins and outs of it.
I don't, I don't off the top of my head know what Winter Park is anymore.
Yeah, I did. I saw a basic Google search that said like four point five, but I don't know the other breakdown.
They have a fire department of their own, you know, so I, I'm not really sure. We always do look at our local municipalities to make sure Orange County's four something.
Okay.
I think Opoie is for something, but they break their fire out also.
Okay.
So you're, we're really right in line.
Okay.
The one you're going to look at is Windermere, and I think they're around four, maybe three point something. And that's because of their property values.
Got, oh, okay, gotcha.
Jason.
Yes.
Rest assured, you're getting your best bang for your buck here.
Yes. Property value is very high here.
Yeah, yeah, we got in, I gosh, I guess, three, three and a half years ago, we started the whole building process. But yeah, like even the next weekend, we closed, or like signed paperwork, things started to skyrocket, right?
So anyway, there's your little primer.
Yeah.
On your taxes.
Thank you. Yeah, it's good to know. Like I said, apologies for ignorance and not being fully heard.
That's why, that's why we have meetings.
Yes, yeah, it's my first one, so.
And at least, you know, everybody at Town Hall, at least Andy is our town manager, will take care of you if you have any questions.
Cool. Yeah, I got a business card for two town managers. So if I got any questions, I'll probably.
Well, we only, well, we have an assistant town manager and we have the town manager. You may have an old business card.
I think I had two. I can't remember the names that were given to me for the two business cards. I'm sorry?
You might have.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry.
I'm just going to say, if you were in your house on Popka for a while and you had homestead exemption and you sold that and it came by way of paper, now you must start right at the top and, and pay, you know, on the purchase price of the house and.
That will drive your taxes way up.
Yeah, I had a little bit of a homestead exemption on this and extra homestead, but yeah.
Have Save Our Homes. Orange County has Save Our Homes. So after a certain period of time, they lock your property value into no more than three percent per year.
Gotcha. Okay.
You may have had that in a popka.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Much better off here.
Oh, yeah, there's no more bullets landing in my driveway and.
There you go.
That's nice.
Prices, prices.
Yeah. Local government provides more services to you than probably I would imagine you're getting from the county. You know, like you said, we're paying for the fire, but it also includes your, your water or your garbage. Yep. Solid waste and things like that, police, streets and those things that you probably use a lot more than you do. Gotcha. Some of the other agencies that are taxing. And just so you want to be really safe, our police don't even carry bullets. We're good. They run really fast.
Please come back and get well versed and come to every one of our meetings for at least a year so you can.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, sorry, taking so much time.
Second and fourth, except September and November.
Okay, I try my best. My wife has a pretty inflexible schedule. She's a ER physician. So I'm actually rushing to get home right after this to help take care of the kids because she's running on two hours.
Help me to answer questions and you do not have to wait for a meeting, Andy and Elise.
Okay, yeah.
The rest.
A lot of people said to come here and I.
I don't know who those utility people are because we, we, you know, Duke Energy is our utility people, but they don't work for us.
I'm in the building right over here, the, the local utility.
Utility billing.
Utility.
Yes, but yeah, I'm sorry, not Duke.
It should be, we'll, we'll look into that. Okay?
Okay, cool. Thank you everyone so much. So thank you for this time, but yeah, I'm gonna, sorry, I have to zip out now, but thank you so much. That was a big help and.
Chase you coming by.
It's nice to meet everyone too. I'll try to get back when I can.
Come see me if you want.
All right, we'll do. Thank you, sir.
Same old.
Thank everyone. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you.
Yes, at two. Alrighty. All right, so we're going back to consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to pull out of the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to accept consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash ten.
I don't need to read the resolution.
Oh.
Distortedness. That's Andy, so.
Sounds good to me. So who's taking this one? Budget amendment. Andy, you taking that?
Yes, I will. Let me pull it up here. I was. She did have a phone. One second here, I apologize.
Okay. You have three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. Okay, thanks. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash ten is a budget amendment for the town of Oakland for fiscal year ending in September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. This is really a housekeeping measure. As a result, at, at year end, we kind of, we kind of go through our expenses and our revenues. And then we adopt a budget amendment to accurately reflect those revenues and expenditures. The budget amendment that you'll notice takes into account a $200,000 transfer from the utility fund budget to the general fund, which was recommended by the town's auditor several meetings ago when the town commission was presenting the, the audit for the previous fiscal year. So we, we went ahead and made that transfer in the budget amendment. And then the budget also reduces the total revenues and expenditures from 10 million, five thirty-seven to 10 million, $21,000. So our expenditures actually went down. And so the budget amendment reflects a more accurate picture of the town's finances for the previous fiscal year. Town staff recommends approval of resolution two thousand twenty-three dash ten for the general fund budget amendment. There was no need to amend the utility fund budget. So you'll see the exhibit A, which shows a more detailed report of the expenditures and revenues. And so town staff recommends approval of budget amendment and resolution two thousand twenty-three dash ten.
Hey, do we have any questions or let's, let's get a motion on the table and then we'll.
Make a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-three dash ten.
Second.
Moved in sec, do we have any questions or comments on the table?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to open it to the public. Do we have any questions or comments? Going to close it and all in favor? Those were all ayes, right?
Yes.
Okay, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash eleven, I think Darren, you're taking this one?
It's going to be really quick, almost rinse and repeat from the last, the Pollard Street proposal. Basically, in an nutshell, the purpose of this, this resolution is to establish a four-way stop sign, four-way intersection at Winter's, Winter Street, Winter's Landing, sorry, Winter's Landing and Oakland Avenue, right in front of where the PD and the fire department is. And what that's going to do is establish, that's the easternmost golf cart safe zone that we will have. We've already established a wetter mode. Once it's ordered, they will have a centralized location as well, making there three controlled intersections in the town to cross Oakland Avenue to South, to be able to operate golf carts within this golf cart safety zone. The exhibit, exhibit A shows what the intersection currently looks like and where the stop signs to be placed. That, where the stop sign will not be placed on top of the police department. Basically, and again, to reiterate from the last proposal, Florida state statute said you cannot cross the county roads. Or Oakland Avenue is kind of a four thirty-eight, cannot cross the county road unless it is a controlled intersection, meaning four-way stop or traffic signal, a red, a red light. Obviously, you do not want to put a red light at either one of these intersections. We feel the stop signs, things. And that way to do that, I included the next slide, just two pictures of what it would look like north, or east and westbound on Oakland Avenue where the stop sign would be placed. And then north and south, there already are existing stop signs on Motomastic, Captain Ross, or whatever, I think it's Captain Ross now.
Captain Ross Road.
So that's, those two stop signs already in place, we would just be adding the two on Oakland Avenue. In addition to establishing the golf cart safety zone, it's also going to slow traffic in front of the school, which is a huge benefit, keeping people safe in front of the school as well. Other than that, the, on that last slide, this is step number two of a multi-step, I already outlined the future step, which is the new ordinance, and then also a resolution which would allow golf cart travel on Tub north of fifty. Once those things get in place, that, those would come in place after this. And once that is done, we will have established, much like Winter Garden, a complete comprehensive golf cart safety zone, which allows travel to some of the businesses along fifty, back to the downtown area. So people appear in the golf carts. It is the safest way to allow for golf carts to travel throughout.
We get to church on Sunday.
The shirking. So we're going to continue until all of this is placed, we're going to continue to stop folks that are, that are violating the laws that currently stands and provide educational, education, not enforcement. We, we, I noticed some people are very upset that they're being stopped, but it's only to provide information, not sanctioning anybody. So at the end of this, like I said, with the last one from Pollard Street, recommendations that we would approve this resolution as it stands to, to establish the third and final golf cart or controlling. Said as fast as I could without.
In the minute.
So do we have a motion? On the table?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand three dash. I'm second.
Okay, moved in second. Questions? So just for general knowledge. So I'll open it publicly. Does anybody have a question or a comment?
Just curious, so that I don't get the opportunity to be educated by you and my golf cart. East of that four-way stop now by the police station, fire department, it is off when it's for the golf cart. From Oakland, only because about 250 feet after that, the town of Oakland actually ends. So we can't change, that's Winter Gardens property. So that's, at Captain Ross is the first place that we can possibly have a controlled intersection and safely allow people traveling back to Oakland. But yeah, that'll be the easternmost. And it's now a, anyway, we need north of there to go through and that's Oakland Park. That's the point of all this is to include that so people can get up to that cut through, through the park. And they can travel downtown to Winter Garden out through the construction. That's what this will, that's what.
So I'm going to close it to the public if anybody, unless anybody has further questions. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Free time.
All right, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash twelve, town property for affordable housing. Who's speaking? Brad's taking this one.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Brad, please, we're trying to serve the county. Mayor said, this is a resolution one three dash twelve. This came out very quickly with us last week, and so I heard, so I really appreciate all the help with Elise and Mike and everybody getting together. So Florida statute was to change this last legislative cycle. That took in the requirement that by October first, one three, that all local governments would do an inventory of town, of local government owned properties, in this case, town owned properties, to determine whether or not those properties would be could be used for affordable housing purposes. And if the town determines there are county properties that could be used, then the town is required to adopt a list that lists those that then folks could come in and utilize that statute for affordable housing as part of that process. So we went through the process to look at that. So what we did was we, we identified all town owned properties. We did use the Orange County property appraiser data. And we did come up with sixty-nine properties that the town owns. We did then put that inventory together and had Elise and Mike and others review it to make sure to look to see if there was opportunities. One of the things about the statute though, that makes it somewhat difficult, it doesn't define what it means that it's appropriate for affordable housing. There's no definition of what that means. So how we've done it, because we've done this in other jurisdictions, is we look at, when we look at local town owned properties, we look first, all right, is there already something there, the town facility? Okay, well, obviously that's not usable. Secondly, is town owned property, is it maybe intended for some future improvement, whether it's ride away utilities, home owner, or whatever. But the town has a future potential use for that property. And then third is, is there some limitation on development, whether that's environmental, like significant wetlands or other environmental restrictions or access issues, like we've got some landlocked properties that the town owns here in the town. So when we take into those account, and I, I might looked at all of this, the determination was there aren't any town owned properties that would be available for affordable housing under this statute. the determination was there aren't any town-owned properties that would be available for affordable housing under this statute. So the resolution that's before you this evening is making that determination that the town has evaluated the properties and has determined that you have no properties to list as available for affordable housing under the statute. Now, one important thing to say is, even, that doesn't mean, though, moving forward, if there's another opportunity that the town wants to do for affordable housing, you can still do that with your property. So this doesn't restrict you from doing anything in the future. What it does do, though, by not listing it, there's restrictions on what the town can do with those properties that get listed there. So it kind of hides your hands a little bit moving forward. So this doesn't prevent you, if you want to do something in the future, you still can do that. The other part of the statute is within three years, so by October 1st, 2026, we have to reevaluate. Again, you can do that more often if you'd like. So that's what your resolution is. It has been reviewed by myself, as well as your town staff here, and we recommend approval of the resolution.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, approve resolution 2023-12.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, but I'm going to editorialize for just less than three minutes.
Ready to go.
While we do not have property like this for affordable housing, we have, over the last 30 years, done everything we can to help people who are underserved. We've had three, I think, CDBG grants, which includes even knocking homeowners' houses to the ground and rebuilding them. If there's some standard, we've donated to Habitat for Humanity, Homes in Partnership. We've done a lot of things to try and help people stay in their homes and be able to afford them. Home at Last, yep, seven of those. So I think that we are, you know, stepping up to the plate in a way that we should be. And unfortunately, we just don't have that kind of property here. So does anyone else at the table have anything that they would like to add?
Nope.
Something to add to it, this is on a macro level, on a state level. You know, we kind of bought this topic up during my managerial report. The FLC, the Foglia Cities, was really looking at this. Of course, everyone is concerned about workforce housing and affordable housing.
Of course.
But the state is kind of forcing towns and cities and villages to make these type of properties available. And some places, it may just get forced where, like you was mentioning earlier, you may, you know, they can't, you can't tell them no because of how the statute lists it. So this is, this may be, this is going to be a hot topic.
Yes. Absolutely.
And the state legislator, and I've talked to Stephanie about it and Elise about it. So yes, it's important that we're doing it, but at the same time, on a micro level, the whole entire state. You know, there's areas where it can go, but the state legislature tells us where they can go and how it can be.
And they've never done that before in other ways.
This is very important.
Yes, it is.
Topic.
And it came up very quickly, and I think Brad and Elise had to scramble a little bit to get this foot together. So it's good that we're complying with their requests. Anybody else at the table? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, Brad. Okay, so we are on to other policy matters, Lake Apopka, Johns Lake, fall sand removal. So I'm interested here, what everybody thinks. And I have some thoughts of my own at the appropriate time. So Andy, do you have anything you want to present, or do you want?
I'll just read the background, Madam Mayor, if you have a moment.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And then we have a contractor who submitted a quote for the sand removal, and then has a couple slides that he can show the commission if there's any questions. In March of 2023, the town entered a contract with Solitude Lake Management to restore the historical northerly flow of water from the Johns Lake Outfall Canal into Lake Apopka, and to reinforce the banks of the newly relocated canal with native vegetation. In addition, the contractor agreed to remove sediment in and around two boat dock structures located west of the canal. The agreement with the contractor required approximately one to three feet of sediment to be removed in specific areas, which the contractor did to a large degree. Measurements taken by staff verified that overall this was the case. Within a few days of the project completion, the remaining sediments had migrated back in and settled into the areas that had recently been dredged. They didn't use a proper piece of equipment in our, but they did use a front-end loader type machine and a smaller suction to suck some of the sand out in accordance with the specifications that was put out by the previous town manager. We attributed the sediment filling back in to the natural ebb and flow of the lake. Once again, the boat docks were impacted to the point that they could not get out into deeper water. In some areas, the water depth had gone to four feet to six inches in less than two weeks. Staff had been consulted with the towns. We, two engineering firms, in addition to an outside firm, and was informed that they could not provide advice for these types of specialized dredging projects. We then reached out to Sea Level Development LLC, who specializes in mechanical underwater dredging. They have experience dredging for Orange County government and worked for years with the Greater Orlando Airport Authority. Sea Level Development LLC provided their recommendations, as well as a firm quote for additional sediment removal to provide relief to the two structures and the surrounding areas. The contractor is recommending removal of 5142 cubic yards of sand at a cost of $120,000. Unfortunately, due to Mother Nature, they cannot provide a guarantee of further encroachment of sand into the boat dock areas. However, the contractor felt confident that without severe weather event, the removal of sand would be sufficient for many years. If approved by the town commission, town staff would recommend each property owner sign a memorandum of understanding that the town will not provide additional sediment removal in this area in the future. The project would require a permit modification with the Army Corps of Engineers and the St. Johns River Water Management District, which would be done after approval of the proposed quote. The recommendation this evening would be the town commission to provide direction to this town staff regarding additional sediment removal. And the attachments that you see is a map of the outfall area into Lake Apopka. And as you can see, if you, if you look at the properties to the east of the canal, if you look over on the far right-hand side, that's, that's the mouth of the canal that sort of jets out. That, to the point, that's the, where the canal ends. And then, as you can see, as you see to the west, you can sort of see there in the lake how the sand has sort of migrated to the west of the canal. A lot of that, we believe, was due to a breach in the canal itself, which allowed some of that sand to be pushed over, over years, over several years to the west. The, like I said, the original, the contract, that was, the contractor that was there previously, did make some improvements to the canal, did patch up the bank that was, that had been breached. So now the water that we know now will flow out, immediately out to the north. However, that sand still does exist, and it is in front of, you know, pretty, the two, two property owners, and it's starting to creep over quite a bit to the third, and then on down west into westerly. However, we do believe that by covering the breach, that we've sort of eliminated additional sediment, as long as that repair holds up into the existing canal structure. So the Sea Level Development quote that you see for $120,000, I'm going to let the contractor, AJ, he'd like to come forward to kind of explain to the town commission and the general public the process that he uses to remove sand from the lake and kind of tell you about his experience with dredging of sand. And then he'll stand for any questions. And he has a, an overhead of what he is proposing to be done that would hopefully benefit the homeowners and remove some of the, some additional sand out of the lake. AJ, if you'd like to come forward?
Remember, you have three minutes.
Good evening. To answer, and I've got another slide or two. One correction, we're using hydraulic dredging. Okay. Mechanical dredging is taking an excavator or a loader and scooping it up. This is a photo representative of the equipment we'll be using. It's got a cutter head on the front, a pump, and then it pumps the sand, the water combination through the pipe. To address the statement about the sand coming back and wanting to... I've kind of drew a sketch that we'll pass around. And in this flouted area, you'll see the edge of where the sand is now. It's probably beyond the depths of what we looked at. But in the cloud, you can see where I've drawn, drawn this profile view. If you'd stop, typically, the dredging would stop at this line, and that's kind of what you've, what you've done in a different method. But it's, you know, what you did was stop there, but you punched holes, and that's what let your sand come back so fast. And if you look at this, that's what you'd create doing that. So then, as the waves come over, bring the sand over, it kind of swirls around there, catches it, and then lets it come right back in. The thin line is what we'd propose, that we would dredge, and that leaves that more in the, gives that profile a slope to make it flush. So when the waves come in, bring the sand in, it goes, you know, goes back out. You don't have that sediment trap to catch it. So there's two additional slides done.
And to clarify, the original, the original scope of services really just cleaned out an eight-foot section of sand immediately in front of each of the docks to the north. So the big area that you see there, none of that sand was really removed. And so, so what, can you just talk about a little what?
Yeah, the method they did, and I originally bid this job in its entirety, the canal restoration and that stuff. There was, you know, a significant difference in price, obviously, from what we had proposed going. The canal restoration that's been done, it's fine, it works fine. The method of dredging is where I think the project got sidelined and why your sand come back so, so quickly. And the picture that we passed around of the dredge that we used with the cutter head, it cuts a flat bottom, and we'll go back to the original white sand bottom that we had, and it'll be sloped from, from the shoreline out to the original bottom again, in one slope. And that's what prevents your, your sand from coming right back in within a few weeks.
Is that what the hydraulic dredging?
Hydraulic dredging, yes.
That's the picture.
Yes.
Yes, and that's what the, and that's what is, is the big difference in the method. And we've done this on multiple projects. Here's one, if you want to pass it around, St. Johns River Boat Ramps. We just completed one of them. We were the fifth contractor that attempted it, the first one that's ever done it successfully. We done it the first time, passed all the survey on the first try. Fifth contractor that had let, that they had hired to attempt to dredge the St. Johns River Boat Ramps.
We're not doing that.
Yeah, it's just a different, it's a different method and a different way of getting it done. It's, you typically see a lot larger projects, stuff like that, long core projects and stuff of that nature.
This area, what you have drawn with the paint, yes, is this where you're going to dredge?
Yes. Yeah, we said, when we were out there with some of the county members, he lifted it up.
When you're talking, he just lifted it up like that.
Yeah. A piece of rebar. Then, and that, that is what we'll go to. And that's our, that's the profile, what we were talking about, that we'll, that we move there. And it, you know, it'll be to the original bottom. But if you leave that, that's what'll trap your sand where you...
To building like a little dam under...
No, we've got to get rid of the dam.
Okay.
Yeah, if you just go out to where it was originally drawn, and that's why our yardage, our cubic yardage numbers was higher than some of the other bidders the first time this one out. Because typically, they'll just dredge what you need to get for the, for the minimum to the boat. You leave this sediment trap out at the edge of everything, everything that the waves bring over swirls around here to start stacking.
What are you talking about? Where's the sediment trap you're talking about?
Would it be this area here? Typically, the dredging would stop here. So when you look at the profile of that, you can still by the dark water, hey, that's where you leave this, this...
So you can dig like a sheet of hole there?
And we're going to go back to the original bottom.
This right here, where's that over here?
That'd be right here.
Facing this way?
That's the profile view.
Facing this way or facing this way?
This wall. This, this picture's looking down. This is the profile, so this would be looking at it from the side.
So it's part toward the shore. Someone up and then this is it toward the shore, when it drops down?
This, where it drops down, would be back here. So we're going to start, see this picture here? You'll start at zero at the water level. And instead of stopping here, you need to go out to catch your original bottom, so you don't create this sediment trap.
How long would it take you? So how long is the project?
Probably 60 days total, start to finish, up to 60 days. Should be, it should be less. But now we're in, you know, just been holidays, fall, stuff like that. Let me take those.
So I have a question. One is, is this project engineered?
You engineered it. I bid on it the first time, it was engineered.
It was engineered, huh?
I don't think we engineered it.
They didn't engineer it. That's part of the problem.
Okay.
So...
When they were not the bid, what was the, the bid documents in the original?
Could tell you, I don't know.
I didn't have it with me today. Yeah, so this was originally, you know, Jack Butler effort. And I was really involved in it, but what I figured out is this was possibly bid through Oakland Park. I think they actually bid it, I'm not correct. It may have been, and then Jack picked up on that bid.
Okay. All right. Everybody gets to say what they want to say. But I am the first, and I'm going first. So this is exactly what I'm talking about. This project is not buttoned up. The homework hasn't been done. There are open questions that you can see already, and I've got a lot more if you want them. So, you know, we talk about the natural ebb and flow of the lake. We talk about the fact that we spent, what, about 120 already? For a project that was not buttoned up. And I'm not going to do that again. And I, I personally am not willing to borrow money to do this. It's, it's a few docks. I have total empathy for you. But we have to think about the whole town, the big picture, and that canal needs to be addressed in a holistic way, where Orange County's already redoing their study. We put out a bid to a engineering firm, correct? What was the name of that one? Andy?
We haven't put out any bids.
You're working on it. The engineering firm that did the study on the canal.
Yeah, that was CDM, the one that the county hired to...
I thought when we talked today that it had already...
Yeah, Pegasus Engineering just brought on, which would be...
You know, so these are the things that concern me. I am not against doing this, but I really, really have a huge concern. We rushed it the first time, and I don't want to rush it again. And I think we need to address it holistically with Orange County and the 40-some owners of this canal, all the way from Lake Apopka to... All the way from Lake Apopka to John's Lake. And this canal was dredged like over a hundred years ago, right, Stacks?
Eighteen forty-seven.
Nineteen forty-seven, I thought it was.
Honestly, I don't know.
Okay, I'll take your word for it, Bob. Yeah, it's, I moved here thirty-three years ago. This now is thirty-three years.
Well, now flow's been redirected now, so the canal is not going to deposit material back in these ponds. The part, the part that you have done fixing the canal, that will solve it to where the canal is back to where its original outfall was.
I would be very happy to talk about this once all the homework has been done.
I'd like, if I could, I'd answer just two things to you. One, this is a very simple project.
How does a simple project cost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
It's just material. It was letting, it, the longer you let it go, the more it costs. So there's more material deposited there than it should have been a few. If it would have been got ahead of when you first seen that the canal was depositing material in the, in that dock area instead of where it was supposed to be. Then, and, and it might have been, it may have been hurricane or it may have been whatever caused it. I don't know. I wasn't hearing it. The only other thing I'd like to say to that is if you're familiar with the town of Maitland, they have exactly.
Part.
Maitland, on Lake Maitland, they have exactly the same situation.
And what are they doing?
They have spent so far like two hundred eighty-six thousand dollars in engineering. And now they don't have money to do the job. The job, our proposal on the job was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. They've spent two hundred eighty-six thousand in engineering and don't have enough money left to do the job.
You make a valid point. But we don't have money.
I understand.
The job.
I understand.
Engineering, and I'm, I am, you know, very opposed to putting this town at risk by, by borrowing a hundred and whatever thousand dollars it's going to cost. Because now we're in for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or a quarter of a million, which isn't as much as it used to be. But, so I'm going to read this into the record so you have it, and then I'll let you all say your piece. Nobody wants this canal fixed more than I do. I want this problem to go away. But I don't believe that we have the right plan yet. It's not engineered because we need a plan for the whole canal, which Orange County is working on. They're renew, they're doing their, their other study. I would love to wait for that to come in. I don't know the timing on that, though. Do you, have you heard anything, Andy?
The proposed study, the revised study, they're looking at the section north of fifty, closer to the trail and some of their.
And that was the one that was well over two million dollars.
And that there, yeah, the proposal was they've got the engineering proposal back for that. So then it would just need to be updated and that would take time. I guess I haven't found out how long that would be.
When we put our budget together this year, we were extremely clear. There was no wiggle room in the budget. So with no funds for extra, borrowing money after we spent over a hundred thousand dollars seems drastic to me. And we're really not at the point where we can make that decision in good conscience. I'm all for you come back with a buttoned up plan.
I'm not, am I missing something? Our plan is to fix the boat slip area. It's not the canal.
Not the canal.
There's a study going for the canal. I've seen that.
Oh, this is the boat of the canal.
Now, the canal busted out of its banks and deposited sand in, in the residents' boat docks.
Yep.
But we're not addressing or fixing or dredging the canal.
I'm all for fixing the canal.
But this isn't the canal.
It is the canal.
Semantics on both.
That's semantics.
Well, I think what she's getting at is if we don't fix the canal, this could happen all over again, to think of what she's getting at.
I just want to do it the right way. I already, I, shame on me that I voted to spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for nothing.
Listen, that's very accurate. Well, we fixed the canal, so it doesn't dump it towards that area. So we stopped, we plugged it, but.
On the right way north. We just had to come.
Okay, so, okay, so we did spend it for something, and that's a fair comment. But. Here again, spending another hundred and twenty thousand.
A two-part section. It could have been, A, the first part fixed the canal, so it wouldn't be dumping. It rode north. If that would have been all a hundred and twenty, we would have spent it on it. We would have. Right? Now it's going towards, now it, it did the damage it was meant to do. The company didn't do what it was supposed to, the first one, and we don't want to get to the fifth one.
My point, exactly.
We don't want to get to the fifth one, so. So we don't get to the fifth one. Not saying you will be the fifth one, but you probably be the, the solution. But we want to get the engineering backing, not just someone who says, I've done it and here's the drawing. And, and I'm sure you got enough experience to back your work up. If we go see other work or you can bring us information, but we want to engineer to say enough information to say with, this will not happen again after you. We don't want to bring you here every five years to do this.
Right. Okay, so I apologize about, maybe we didn't spend it for nothing, but it didn't fix.
Well, you see the picture that, that they had up on the screen. We're putting the, the material that we're dredging out in the same area that's going to give you, you know, it's going to build it up several more feet. So it's going to burn that area in that canal and fortify the area of the canal even greater.
Yeah.
To give you even more protection.
But I feel like we're going, you know, potentially down the right road, but it still doesn't solve the problem if we don't have the money. It doesn't. You know?
Engineering's not going to make it cheaper.
No, it's, but I just want, I want to feel like.
Engineering may cost us, AJ, the engineer may cost us more money, but it'll be the peace of mind of responsible spending for our town for the rest of the citizens. You know what? We still have to take that sand out. And I'm for taking that sand out eventually, when we feel that we made a plan with the engineer backing it up. So we can spend the money responsibly a second time and last.
Yes.
How I.
Well said. So anyway, does anybody else at the table have anything to say?
I will. I'll go next. First of all, talk about the timing. I've been working on this project for a year now. Obviously, you and Steve, without us, we're working on it for a year and a half before that. So now we're two and a half years into it and no further off. So the idea of waiting till we get the perfect storm, well, we'll all be done.
Well. Okay, I thought you were done.
No, I'm not done. What, I get the whole engineering thing. We did try and get several engineers and we had no luck. We had Joe, Joe Dunn involved and trying to help us with it. If it had come to the canal, the canal again needs to be engineered. I don't think it's done right, to be honest with you myself. We are just removing sand right now. It's a simple process of removing the sand and it's done, and we have a contractor that can do it. The problem that I see is we agreed to do something and it didn't get done. We, we did, we rushed it. We, we bought a hundred thousand dollar check because Jack Butler brought it to us without doing a lot of homework. Well, in the last year, I have done a lot of homework.
I know.
And I think we have the right guy that can get this part of the problem removed. It really isn't at this point, part of the whole canal project. It's a result of the canal project.
But beyond that.
And beyond that.
We don't have the money.
Beyond that, we keep going and we work up. If we don't have money at all, then we might as well not even talk to Orange County because we don't have the money to support it. If they come up with a plan, we don't have the money to support it. Andy has come up with a plan. And then, you know, over five years, we can do it and do the right thing. And I think that I've heard this somewhere else before, that sometimes doing the right thing ain't cheap.
No, it isn't.
And that's just the way it is.
That's what I said last time.
And in my mind, this is the right thing to do to get that sediment removed that was dumped there because the canal failed.
What's the plan, Andy? For this money?
Well, you got, you got two pots of money. You got the general fund and you've got the utility fund. Tonight, we transfer two hundred thousand from the utility fund to the general fund. The auditor, the auditor made mention at the, during the audit presentation that he would like to see the general fund balance to be a little more. So we have about one point two million dollars in the general fund reserves, which is basically the town's. That's the money cash that the town has.
That's one option, but.
Now, the other option would be, other option would be to finance it. And then hopefully as your revenues grow, you know, if the economy stays okay and revenues continue to grow with the, the developments and, and property values maybe continue to rise. And that depends on what the commission does with the mileage rate. That, you know, maybe those payments would be absorbed over a five-year period. But we would still need to sit down with, you know, we would finance the project, basically. So this year, we would have to take money from fund balance. If the town wasn't under budget at the end, year end, we don't have a crystal ball, so we don't know where we're going to be at a year end. So we would take technically money from front, fund balance this year, and then hopefully it gets absorbed over the next five to seven years. With, with the growth of revenue, which is once again a crystal ball. So you could take the money from the fund balance. You have one point two million dollars, right around one point two million dollars in the general fund balance. That's what.
Okay, sorry.
That's what the town has in the fund balance. So a hundred and twenty thousand dollars represents about, what, eight percent of the town's reserves?
And that is also our money for a rainy day that will keep us going for about four months.
So my, my suggestion would finance the project in order to keep your fund balance healthy.
Yep. All right, anybody else?
Oh, and with that, just in my mind, it is the right thing to do for what we committed because it's the aftermath of the canal and not leaving that stuff.
And, and the, the, with the mayor's comments of the canal itself would be if the commission is concerned about the canal having a breach again and being that the original improvements need to be looked at, then I would recommend that we have Pegasus Engineering as part of the county. Part of the county study, and now one of our continuing service engineer, I'd recommend that they have experienced. Maybe if they're able to, look at the canal portion, the town staff is just having an issue. We find anybody that specializes in engineering of sand removal and lake bottoms locally. It would be probably a pretty expensive venture to do that part. But possibly an engineer could tell us where we're placing the sand against the bank. Is, is that the proper place? And is the canal, does the canal need any more improvements? But I don't know what the engineer report would say or what their suggestions would be. And so I don't have a cause to, to know what that would be.
I just don't want to be back here again.
I would, I think that's where we're back here, God, you believe me. And the other thing about this, at this point, this lake is a, that canal's a lost point. It's been in seventeen years. Right, this, we're going to do something like dig in some sand out. This would be the time before water starts filling back. That's why I see that, I don't believe the canal dug the way it should have been either, because now that it's empty. It, it doesn't work right to me.
And that's really unfortunate.
Yes, it is. And, and, you know, I can't blame anybody, but we, but we did enough. Jack came in with the right, we grew contract and we jumped on it.
We don't know, we don't know, but we did find out a lot along the way.
Yes.
I mean, Jack did bring a lucrative contract that again, I emphasized, could have been the fix just for the canal going north.
Yeah.
And what happened on, on the side with the sand there, needs to get out one way or the other. It's not going to go away fixing the canal. But the engineer, I, you just mentioned something that I didn't catch on earlier, Andy. To find out the placement of the sand is an engineer to stay there and not go back now. I know you have experience in it, but an engineer is what makes us feel more comfortable.
Right.
Even though my thought is, I don't want to weaken the, the, our, our budget, but having the loan, we could be able to absorb this.
But, okay, so devil's advocate, we have to think about this whole town. And we have to think about what all those rainy day things that could happen to us could completely wreck our budget, give us the inability to pay our bills. And I'm thinking, I'm trying to think about the whole town.
Can we get a full comprehensive plan, all the what-ifs? We know what has to be done, but we, we still need to have Pegasus and county.
That's what I'm saying.
It has to be a part of a process of, you know, of course, we got residents that like, need to move the sand out. But we still need to keep behind the scenes.
Yes.
Sure, nobody's arguing.
I'm leaning on you two because I know you're the closest to it. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm leaning on you to, to kind of guide us, and, and both are making valid points. So can they all be done consecutively? But at the same time, just really, really looking at the end game of figuring it all out. And then we, we all know it's forty-plus owners that really need to be a part of the process.
And Orange County is working in good faith.
Right.
And they are, and we've opened their eyes to it. That's the one good thing that's come out of this is we have really finally opened their eyes. And I guess John Lyons is really very glad with, you know, with them that, that they're finally someone that's saying, yeah, we need to move on. And we got someone else that can, that can help us.
That's what I'm really trying to say is nobody wants this more than I do.
So.
But I think we're premature in trying to pass this tonight to spend that amount of money. I agree with Joseph.
See, I, I don't, it's because it's just getting sand out to finish a project we've already done. And that's if it was starting another project, I'd be right with you. But, but it's not.
I'm not confident in that.
Well, I got a point on that. If the sand's not going to go nowhere, we got time to get the right engineering.
We've been trying to get the right engineer and no one can do it. And in the meantime, we, we're still, you know, three to four years stopping up these residents that are on that side of it, which never had that problem. You know, I know on, on John's Lake side, that problem's always been forever. Keep up with that. But up until, you know, a couple of years ago, there's haven't been this project. So the longer we wait, the, the longer it sits. And people that bought homes on the lake, they could get their houses or could get their boats to their property, just can't do it. And now we've been waiting for years for this to happen. And, and this simple step will solve that problem.
That's a hundred and twenty thousand dollar step.
I understand that.
That's not simple. So we can do one of two things here unless Stephanie stops me for some reason. We could get a motion on the table and we need to open it up. I know there are people here, Bob, I'm going to get to you, I promise. And then we can open it up to the public. So it's up to you, or we can open it up to the public, take comment, and then come back to the table.
Now, we normally make the motion first, I think.
Okay, I don't make motions, so y'all have fun.
All right, I will make the motion that we continue on and finish the project we started. We give Andy the authority to go into contract with sea level, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to remove the sand. I think we started.
I'm going to second that motion. Can I add something to that motion?
I don't know how we do that.
You can amend it. Once a motion has been made, it really, and seconded, it should be voted on and, and kind of killed. And then a, a new motion can be fired up that would include that, that different language.
I haven't been seconded. Hasn't been seconded. I've not been seconded.
There's no second.
It's about to second. I want to say it, but I don't want to say it.
Okay, okay, then I would advise that if, if this isn't the motion and, and no one wants to second this motion as phrased, then, you know, there will, there will just be no second. And then someone else is, is free to fire up a motion or vice versa, you can, and make another one.
Okay, well, I just want to add, if you want to make it, that we do through a loan, whether seven or 10 years, whatever. As long as the period it takes, so it could not have that money tied up through our budget. So, in other words, so don't, we don't feel it. For seven, 10 years, I want to add through a loan and not use the money from the.
Would we not want to leave that up to the town manager to make the best decision on which way to come from? Or do we want to make that decision? I don't, it doesn't matter.
I like what you just said.
So you need a new motion now?
So we need a new motion. So again, I will, then I will, we need to vote no on what I did or kind of.
No, no, you can.
Okay, I can, I will make the motion that we move on with the project that we started on the canal, that we give Andy the authority to finance however he sees fit to finance it or, or pay for at the higher sea level to remove the sand from the properties at the outset of the canal on Lake Apok.
I second that motion.
All right, public comment. I know, Bob, you were itching to say something, so come on up.
I've been itching for four years. Thank you all for your time. One of the comments, Sal, that you'd started to make about, well, the sands aren't in there, we need to wait to get engineering. I think there, there's some validity to that. The other thing is, I started this three and a half years ago with the mayor and Steve Coons. when there was probably the equivalent of a hundred cubic yards or less in the lake. And now there's what, fifty, two hundred or whatever they said. So the problem will get bigger. It will get more expensive to remove. Um, as far as AJ's presentation, um, I met AJ through a referral from Middlesex Construction who's building part of the airport. Um, they said he was excellent in what he did. He and I are not beer drinking buddies. He has been out here now, this is his sixth time to come out here and share his knowledge with us. Um, even when we met with Commissioner Wilson, he had brought his daughter with him and we were asking a lot of questions. Commissioner Wilson, I, I thought she was here to support AJ. Turned to her and asked a question and she gave a very detailed account of how technically something is, would be done. And I just think that shows the dedication that he has to doing things right. Um, the other really important piece of this was, Mayor, you brought up the fact that you'd like to have the homeowners, um, Mr. Britt and I, and please tell me if I'm speaking out of turn, sign something saying.
I did not, I had nothing to do with that.
Okay, somebody mentioned it earlier in this.
Yes, Andy did.
If I did, okay. Um, if, if that is the case, you have no more liability. And I think that Mr. Britt and I are more than willing to sign that. So your liability goes away. If this is done, it doesn't come back. I've been there twenty-one years on that lake and until that breach came through, there has never been a problem even with multiple storms and that it never hurt the, the lakefront. So once that sand goes away, we're done with it.
Yeah, but we still, we do still have liability because we're spending a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's liability.
Okay, well, you, you can bring up a lot of reasons why it shouldn't go. I'm telling you why I think that it should and why I think it's fair if we're willing to take the responsibility of the results of it um with a qualified contractor. I mean, nobody at this table got where they are by not completing what they started. And I would appreciate if you guys would vote to finish what we started.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ward, do you have anything to say?
I want to add, I, I, the fact that for six years now, I've had six inches of water uh under my boat. And I think if any of you had a house in the lake and you had this problem, you would be more willing to, to find the money to do it. Um, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a sin to buy a house, go to a nice house, probably a million dollar house now and uh not be able to use the lake. If I've lost two hundred thousand, probably two hundred fifty thousand dollars in, in value. So I implore you to dig in, let's get this done and, and uh keep the, going next down, about four, five years, open this growing, how we, how we uh, it's like getting more and more expensive here. Just sold house, neighborhood almost a million dollars. So five years ago, that would have been five hundred thousand. So I think your revenue is, if you can cover the cost as well. Thank you.
Your house is going to go up, so you're going to be paying more taxes.
We're going to pay lower than the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, you know, and I'm, I just say it one more time. I am trying to look after the whole town. The whole town. Okay, so anybody else? Scott, do you have any thoughts? Nope.
And we can just.
Jane?
Yeah. Um, no, it's, it's a lot of money that you're spending and, and I, I do feel Bob or Bob's house is absolutely beautiful. I've already told Bob that. Have you ever sold it? That's scandalous. You can say that? I do not. Uh. The one thing I think I would say is I, I don't, I'm all for cleaning it up and, and getting it out. But I think you have to do this in a smart way. I think there's some due diligence that has to be prior to us doing that. And we've, we've got a little time. I know it's been four years uh that Bob said. Um, it's something we don't need to rush into. Look, look what lesson you learned last time. It's a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars you threw away last time? Hundred and twenty thousand dollars you threw away. We didn't throw it away. We fixed. You, you, you fixed. You know, you think you fixed, you didn't fix. Okay? So now you're saying, let's pile the sand out, let's pile it up here again. How do you know that's not going to wash out again with a rainstorm and push back into Bob and Ward's property again? We don't. So if you want to spend a little money, let's do a little due diligence first. Let's lead by our heads, not by our hearts right now. Okay? So let's think about this. Let's instruct the town manager to find a consulting engineer, maybe to come in, provide a narrative. You don't have to spend a lot of money. Just provide the narrative, an engineer's opinion on here's what you should do. And then from there, you can take that and you could go with it and then you need it to, you could say, okay, well, let's proceed to a next step, which is design this so it doesn't wash out again. You know, that would be the way I think I would, would approach this, this issue. I just don't see us throwing away a hundred and twenty thousand dollars right now tonight for two people. When we got a large town to take care of without having. Okay?
Thanks, Shane. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have to, I have to reply to that because Shane's going up saying we wasted a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We completely redirected what caused the problem. And that is working now. That wasn't a waste. Did the whole thing? No. But it won't happen again because that has all been fortified and striped and planted. And that's where the money went. It wasn't wasting it. It was fixing the canal. Exactly what it was designed to do and that's what we did. So it wouldn't happen again.
Okay. Anybody else? All right.
So I propose the public um comment. We're going back to the table.
Are you guys ready to vote? Right? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So I got three ayes. I'm a nay.
I'm a nay.
So we are done. Uh, Andy, do you have anything you need to talk about? Be brave.
Um, if we're going to finance the project, I would recommend the commission uh separately, of course, but maybe at the same time they're doing the dredging, I would recommend that we look at um, having an engineer give us uh another look at the canal. Just hope we see any immediate concerns from the original contractor. They may not have funds to make the improvements. Um, but that's all we can prove. That's, it would be smart to, to go ahead and spend the money to at least get an engineer's opinion on it, on the canal itself. Uh, that would just be my recommendation. Uh, maybe an extra, you know, twenty thousand or fifteen thousand dollars for an engineer's opinion on the canal portion of it. But I think that will go, probably go a long way with the county as well and, and we can include that in the county's plan. And uh we may not be able to afford the improvements if there are anything that come out of that, but it would be nice to know that uh in case there is an issue in the future.
I wholeheartedly agree.
That's why I'm a nay, because I want to have a complete plan.
Me too.
That's why. And that's why. That's why I'm a nay. Not saying don't do it, let's have a B place.
But it wouldn't, but that would just be the, uh, that would just be going on at some point in time.
It's there with us, there with us.
A totally separate thing that I would recommend. We're going to finance and get money. Let's go ahead and include the, enough to do some sort of engineering and looking at that canal, have a look at the canal.
That's smart.
Um.
Three two.
So you're done?
Yeah.
Mark, are you even thinking about?
Now, I would recommend using, being that Pegasus is now on, on a continuing services agreement has done that with the county that we let the county know that have, take a look at the canal portion and add it to their study as well.
Okay. That.
Uh, just want to bring up the Boy Scout uh Eagle Dinner, the Eagle Award uh for next year. Town, you know, part of our events every year. Well, you got the Eagle this year, Mayor. Well, next year we're honoring Rusty Johnson's boy. And just tell you guys to save the date. There will be a flyer and.
What date is it?
March the sixth.
Okay.
Of twenty twenty-four. The Wednesday.
I can do it.
I'm traveling to ten.
Oh. I can't say December's.
Yeah. I'll travel, I'll be done.
Guys.
Uh, no, I don't. Oh, we have Tri-County this week. I think it's Tri-County this week.
Hmm.
Yeah, Tri-County this week. Tri-County Form Six meeting Thursday.
Yes.
Yes, Thursday, yeah.
Where?
Yeah, okay.
So I did, um.
Form six.
Information.
Yeah, I know, I know you register somewhere.
I stay. I don't make any money anyway.
Mm-hmm. So there, that is, that's the Tri-County Thursday. Form six separate. What I said.
No, it's just uh, it won't meet before Thanksgiving. I need to have you all good holiday.
It's good.
I, I don't believe I have anything. So Joseph.
If all hearts and minds are satisfied, let's adjourn is eight twenty-two P M.
It's high horse.